Good evening and thank you for coming. Thanks, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting in order. It is 6:39 PM. You call roll please.
Board Member De La Sierra.
Present.
Board Member Julia.
Present.
Board Member Leoncio.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Senora is absent today. Chairperson Fernandez.
Present.
You have quorum.
Please stand for the pleasurable ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the minute, of the minutes? Does anybody, everybody have a chance to review them?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve them.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? The motion passes. Public comments, do we have any that are here to speak?
I'm just gonna, really quick, for, I don't see anybody online, but if anybody were to be online, you just need to raise your hand to speak. Everybody that is going to be speaking today, you have three minutes. Just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Alejandro Sanchez, 14531 Cedar Court, Miami Lakes, Florida, 33014. Just a short public comment. It's an honor to be here in the presence of you all. I am looking forward to being nominated to be placed on the Planning and Zoning Board by Brian Moreira and to see how the process is during today's meeting. Pleasure to meet you all.
Congratulations. Any, anybody here would like to speak that is not related to an item?
If there is no in-person public comments, I just wanted to state for the record that there are two prerecorded public comments that the Office of the Clerk received for tonight's meeting. This is regarding hearing number Zone 2024-0162. These comments are from the applicants, Mr. Najee and Mr. Panai. So please, IT, if you can, please play these two prerecorded public comments at this time.
...use GU property regardless of size is legally recognized as property under Miami-Dade County Zoning Code Section 33 to 311. This designation allows for various uses, including residential development. Our property, initially divided for zoning purposes to enable the adjacent house construction, holds full legal property status. Our GU property has significant value and potential, just like any other recognized property. It's unacceptable to underestimate its worth or our rights as property owners. We will take a quick look and explain the history of this property and our legal due diligence to support the proposal that we believe is feasible and fair for everyone. Initially, this property was a large single piece, later split into two parcels. The previous owner divided the property when submitting a rezoning application, as evidenced by a boundary survey. According to public records, the parcel with folio number as shown is 17,772 square feet. Our due diligence confirmed that the subdivision was formally rezoned, approved, and completed in 2007. The deed indicates the frontage roads right-of-way as the easterly right-of-way line of the frontage road for State Road No. 826, specific exclusions for the right-of-way include: It excludes the east 170.0 feet. It also excludes the north 25 feet for road right-of-way as outlined in Right-of-Way, deed recorded in Official Records Book 11575, page 1026. This means the east 170 feet and the north 25 feet are excluded for right-of-way purposes only. Public easement and right-of-way. It's important to address the town's claim of a public easement and right-of-way from our property. Documents confirm a right-of-way, implying that if the town asserts this area as a public road, the city must contribute to its maintenance per Florida statutes, Chapter 335.0415. This statute states that if a roadway is designated as public, the local county is responsible for its maintenance. Thus, the town should contribute to any necessary maintenance or improvements if claiming this easement as a public road. The information given alongside of public easement and right-of-way, to clarify the septic tank installation requirement, we have to calculate the square footage of the property. The property measures approximately 17,742.59 square feet, based on its size of 0.4073 acres. There is a discrepancy in the plating concerning a 25-foot frontage road right-of-way, which is owned by us, but it was excluded from previous surveys and the ordinance. We are legally permitted to install a septic tank based on findings from the deed and Miami-Lakes City Code, Chapter 4, Section 4 to 142. We aim to ensure compliance with all local, state, and federal regulations, including zoning laws and environmental protections. We propose amending Ordinance 07-91 to resolve plating issues and align with legal surveys and ordinances promptly. We received this email from a public official from Miami-Dade County confirming our findings. At the time of purchase, we had this information in hand. Our proposal includes road improvements and commits to enhancing existing infrastructure, specifically in the frontage area of our property. This approach encourages community participation. We are committed to ensuring that our project not only meets regulatory standards, but also enhances the neighborhood and contributes to the overall prosperity of the community through thoughtful infrastructure improvements. Two, precedent for residential development. There are already four houses built on the street, in every side of the street, not three, like Mr. Kobia stated previously, and our lot is the only one we were told we can't build on it, indicating a clear precedent for residential development despite the current GU zoning. Three, zoning ordinance reference. According to Miami-Dade Ordinance Section 33 to 282.2, zoning decisions should align with the neighborhood's existing character and development patterns. Upholding these principles is crucial for maintaining fairness and consistency in regulatory application. In summary, we aim to conduct an environmental assessment aligned with rezoning plans, leverage existing precedent for residential development, and adhere to zoning ordinances to ensure equitable treatment and uphold our property rights. Our storm water management plan surpasses Miami-Dade County and Miami-Lakes ordinances, Chapter 24, Article 8, exceeding AE 6-feet flood zone requirements. This plan has been developed in consultation with Abdul Wares, a civil engineer and district drainage engineer at the Florida Department of Transportation, ensuring that all measures align with both local and state guidelines.
Would you play the second?
Aligning with Miami-Dade County and Miami-Lakes CDMP and Florida statutes, Chapter 335.0415. Our rezoning request aligns with the comprehensive development master plan, meets regulatory standards, and benefits the community through environmental stewardship and infrastructure enhancement. Based on the ordinance of rezoning from 2007, we have identified several sections and studied them to outline the conditions in this ordinance and requirements for the proposed rezoning and development. Below, I have summarized the key conditions and provided information of our compliance for each condition. Condition one, one, consistency with comprehensive plan. Condition, proposal must align with the comprehensive plan, including infrastructure standards and concurrency management. Compliance, the RU1 rezoning request conforms to the comprehensive plan's low-density residential designation and infrastructure standards. The site plan ensures development in accordance with these requirements. Two, conformance with code requirements. Condition, proposal must meet all code of ordinances and land development code requirements. Compliance, the submitted site plan meets RU1 size and frontage parameters. Full compliance with relevant ordinances and codes is confirmed. Three, changes in land use and development conditions. Condition, proposal must reflect changes in land use and development patterns. Compliance, the area has transitioned to residential use, supporting the rezoning to RU1 amidst single-family home surroundings. Four, compatibility with surrounding uses. Condition, proposal must be compatible with neighboring land uses. Compliance, RU1 zoning is compatible with nearby single-family homes, an FPL substation, and canal right-of-way. Five, impact on public facilities and services. Condition, proposal must not strain public services beyond capacity. Compliance, the development integrates within existing infrastructure capacity for water, power, and other services. Given the established right-of-way road, the city has provided a dedicated utility line for the water supply, as evidenced by the as-built drawings. Six, environmental impact. Condition, proposal must avoid adverse effects on environmental features. Compliance, anticipated minimal impact on aquifers, wildlife habitats, and vegetation due to non-use of hazardous materials. Seven, impact on property values and general welfare. Condition, proposal must not diminish property values and should benefit community welfare. Compliance, RU1 rezoning is expected to enhance the residential character and property values of the area. Eight, orderly land use pattern. Condition, proposal must contribute to a cohesive land use pattern. Compliance, RU1 rezoning supports orderly residential development consistent with existing trends. Nine, public interest. Condition, proposal must align with public interest and the land development code. Compliance, RU1 rezoning supports less intensive land use in line with community interests and infrastructure capabilities. Ten, recommendation and conditions. Condition, maintain conditions of previous resolution number 4ZAB 182-83 unless modified. Compliance, proposal adheres to approved conditions following specified survey and subdivision requirements. Condition two, setback requirements. Condition, setbacks for the main building and pool must meet specific distances. Supporting site plan details, detailed measurements on the site plan ensure adherence to specified setbacks. Condition three, maximum lot coverage. Condition, maximum lot coverage is 35% of the net lot area. Compliance, the proposed building area covered by the roof is 3,976 square feet, which is 26% of the net lot area of 15,034.5 square feet, within the 35% limit. Condition four, flood zone compliance. Condition, the property is located in flood zone AE with a base flood elevation, BFE, of 6.0. Compliance, proposed construction includes a raised foundation with a finished floor elevation set at 17.00 foot NGVD 29, exceeding the BFE by 11 feet to mitigate flood risk effectively. Supporting site plan details, the site plan specifies the elevation details, ensuring adherence to flood zone requirements. The certified local appraiser utilized comparable properties in the vicinity to assess our property, resulting in an appraisal value closely aligning with the purchase price, as detailed in their appraisal report. Our property has an independent folio number duly recorded in the public records. We are working together for any requirements pertaining to our portion of the property. Any agreements or arrangements involving other parties should be directed to that party.
Would you move on to our quasi-judicial part of the agenda?
Are there any further public comments? Public comments closed. You can move on to the quasi items.
The first item, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, I think we may have a public comment.
Mr. Chair, I believe that these persons about to speak did give his public comment in the video, just stating. If you want to extend the time?
This is in regards to that? We, we have a limit of the time that we, that we allow for each public comment.
So, the first item, please be advised that the following items on the board's agenda are quasi-judicial in nature. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and the staff have made their presentations on each item. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be either cross-examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the board to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Any person presenting documents to the board should be provided the clerk with a minimum of 10 copies. Further details of the quasi-judicial procedure may be obtained from the clerk. This is with regards to variance matter 2024-0203. Before we move forward with this item, Mr. Chair, I think anyone that has had any party communication should disclose it at this time.
So, I don't know, an abundance of caution. I do want to disclose that the applicant in this case is someone that I've worked with in the past, and I did say hello in the parking lot. But other than that, I'm not, I don't think that'll influence my decision or anyone else's decision on this item.
Thank you, Member Julia. Anyone else? Mr. Chair, that being the case, the applicant is Ladies Hernandez, and we can move forward with the town presenting its case.
I do have to swear in everybody first. Do you want me to swear in for both cases? So for anybody providing testimony for the two public hearings coming forth, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear to say the truth, and only the truth will help you, God? You may be seated.
All right, so about case VARH 2024-0203 for Ladies Hernandez. This is a resident seeking a variance to allow a canopy to project 12.8 feet into their rear yard, where a maximum of 10 feet are allowed in this case. The applicant is requesting to retain an existing 16.85 by 12.8 attached canopy. This is again, previously, it's a pergola that is, but it's attached to the house. The rear setback is a 20-foot rear yard, so they are allowed to have 10 feet in this case. So they're requesting that 2.8-foot variance. We're recommending denial for this process, or for this variance. They do not comply with enough of the items on this. They do comply with items B and D, that it would be compatible with development patterns of the town as this, as this canopy is only 215 square feet. So it's not, it's under the 350-square-foot maximum. So we said it complied with that item, as well as that it could be approved without causing substantial detriment to the adjoining properties, as the canopy still allows for a 7.28 rear setback, which is greater than the required 3 feet, and it is on the side of the property facing the street, as this is a corner lot. So those are the two that we said they complied with, but we are recommending denial for this item.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question, so?
Of course.
As a clarification, the code, in this case, basically says the rear setback has to be more than, than the five feet, because this is an attached canopy versus a non-attached canopy.
Yeah, so it's not about the rear setback in this case. Because it is attached, normally they're allowed to protrude about seven and a half feet from the home. However, when you have a rear lot that is less than 25 feet in length, the canopy is allowed to protrude half of the length of the lot from the home. So in this case, this canopy is 12.8 feet from the attachment to the home to the end, and they're only allowed to have 10 feet. So the rear, they do comply with the rear setback. They're allowed to have that. It's about the length of the canopy itself that they're getting a variance for.
And if, if we're not attached to the home, it would, there would be no need for a variance if it was non-attached?
I don't believe so, no. They comply with the square footage requirements, and they comply with setbacks. So if it was not attached, it would be allowed, correct?
Correct, so in the case they would be not attached, it would be considered an accessory structure. An accessory structure has to be, in this district, six feet away from the main structure, and it's then allowed to be five feet from all property lines.
A variance would still be needed, because that would only be nine?
Because it would be too close to the house, yeah.
Correct. So this is an example of an ordinance that we passed 20, and some of you were here at the time around 2018, because we were seeing a lot of smaller yards with, with difficulty for having detached accessory structures and pergolas. So we sort of gave them a little bit of a, half of one and two-thirds of the other by allowing them to keep a larger attached structure instead of having a detached pergola, so that they can at least have the same amount of shaded space in their yard, but without having to have those six feet or 10 feet, in the case of RU1, of space between the, the structure and the, and the house. So this is one of those applications. But in this case, again, the minimum, the, the number that we reached that was to be able to, like, sort of span half the distance of that existing rear yard, which in this case is 20 feet. Half that distance would be 10. In a larger, if they had 22 feet, it would be 11 feet. If they had 25 feet, it would be 12 and a half.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, through the chair. You said that this is existing at this time? It was done without permits?
Yes, this is existing, and it was done without permits. They're here as a result of a code compliance violation, trying to correct that and bring it into compliance.
So it's work that was not allowed. If they were to come to the city, the city would never allow them to do it.
It would not comply with?
It would not comply.
Yeah, it would not comply. They would have needed a variance to get this done ahead, but, so they did not get the variance or the permits.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Come up, yeah, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Ladies Leana Hernandez, and I'm at the address of 14925 Northwest, 90th Court. I have a few signatures I picked up from my neighbors regarding the roof, and I would like to turn them in.
Yes, if you can submit it to me, please. Do you have 10 copies, any chance?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
I'm aware I did, without permits. I wasn't sure if I needed, or, you know, if I needed the permit for that. I truly need that space to be covered, because my patio is all open. There's not much space. And in order to enjoy a little more, you know, that area of my backyard, which is basically the, the only area I have and the pool, I would truly need your help to get that variance. I don't have that protruding, like, over anything into my neighbor or anything, you know, there's, there's a space back there. It's very minimal, the area I have there to enjoy the minimal space I have next to the pool, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I, if you may?
I have a question.
Stay, yeah, stay for just one second, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, at the photograph that you have included here, and it seems to be a aluminum roof.
It's aluminum.
Insulated aluminum roof?
Yes.
And then the, the support that you have to the outside looks like bolt-down columns to the concrete?
Yes.
Those are bolt-down columns to the concrete?
Yes. Well, not, it's, it's in, in the ground, actually. Not bolted to, to the pavers.
It's not bolted to the paper, goes through, past the pavers?
Yeah.
Goes past the pavers?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, so, I mean, for discussion, I'm gonna make a motion that I think I'm, I'm gonna turn down the, the request for variance, just for discussion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So I'm just uncomfortable with, with the, the amount of feet that they need that they're taking up, and they're, the, how close they are to the neighbors and to the property line.
Well, here's what I, here's what I see in the discussion, and that's why I asked the question from the applicant. Being a insulated panel roof, it in fact, they could in fact move that support in and comply with the 10 feet, and we could give them the ability to go ahead and continue without having had permits. They would have to have full permits to make that change, but it's not a change that would be totally crazy. I mean, it's only a foot and a half or two feet. A two-feet difference, because they could still have, if they moved the, if they moved the column, if they moved the column and the beam back to 10 feet, then they would comply, and then they could have a bit of an overhang. They wouldn't have to cut it all off. They would have, they would just lose basically two feet.
Right, and they, they wouldn't need a variance for that, right? They would just need to pull permits and go through the proper channels.
In anything that you decide today, whether it is to make it 10 feet or approve it as is, she would have to go and get permits to get this final, yes. So the permitting process would have to go on, and there would be reviews as to whether or not it's properly attached to what, and all those things, yes.
We'd have to open up again for, for comments.
I'll make a motion to open, if it's all right.
I'll second, okay.
Yes, yeah.
My front neighbor, she has a same aluminum roof. It's almost basically the same situation that I have in my patio. If you want to take a look at?
No, we, we can only look at this.
Okay.
We can only look at what you, we have before us. Another neighbor is beyond our ability here right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yet to close it again.
Yeah, we, we will close, I'll make a motion to close public comments.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, so, do we have any more discussion?
I mean, I, I did drive by, and I will make a note that there are several homes in that area that are in a similar situation. And I guess it's something that the, the town is gonna have to somehow or another, either revisit how we write the code, whether we go by a rear setback, or there's gonna be several people with that situation. I don't know if the new code violations require, like, the town can just go to a property? Or how's that new state statute?
It, it's, the, the problem with, you know, with, with this issue, you know, in particular, is whenever you're looking at something that's in the rear of a house, is how do you get access to it? No? As, as an attorney, you know that, you know, you can't just barge in. You can't take a look over somebody else's house, and, you know, we're limited as far as what we can do to verify what's going on back there unless the homeowner invites us, you know, and then we're able to, to view it. The inspector can only see what's in, in plain sight, now, in the plain view, in the plain-view doctrine. And so that's, that becomes a challenge for, for any code enforcement.
Now, that's on the side street. There's a side street also, and not just the front. There's a side street there you can see.
Correct, so if it's in the plain view, you can see.
It's in plain view.
But if it's not?
Right.
If no further discussion, I'm ready to?
All right, so the motion I have is to turn down or deny the request. All right, Board Member De La Sierra.
Yes.
Board Member Leoncio.
Yes.
Board Member Julia.
No.
Chairperson Fernandez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to variance 2024-0274. Attorney?
Yes. Next matter, again, I'll, I'll read the same disclosure. Please be advised that the following items on the board's agenda are quasi-judicial in nature. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and the staff have made their presentations on each item. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives her testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be cross-examined or sworn, testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the board to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak up for that organization. Any person presenting documents to the board should provide the town clerk with a minimum of 10 copies. Further details of the quasi-judicial procedure may be obtained from the clerk. This matter is variance 2024-0274. The applicant is Gary Reed and Candace Spear.
Hello again. So yes, as he stated for this variance, they are looking to allow a swimming pool to encroach by eight feet and one inch beyond the tie line of their property. This is a single-family home on Lake Valerie. This is a single-family home on Lake Valerie, sixty-five feet from the waters edge, and it's furthest point, and fifty-four feet at its nearest. They're, again, I said, they're requesting variance to allow an eight-foot encroachment, and the encroachment would leave thirty-eight feet of unencumbered slope area beyond the pool. We're recommending in favor of approval for this proposal. According to our analysis, the only item we found they did not comply with was item A. They had not received, didn't receive any letters of support from their neighbors, but we did feel that this would be compatible with development patterns in the town due to their open space beyond the pool, as well as the essential character of the neighborhood, and detriment to adjoining neighbors, as well as doing substantial justice. They do, other homes in the neighborhood do have pools, and other variances have been approved for this type of amount of length, and they do have some unique circumstances in their property. It's very, it's sited unusually close to the tie line in this case, so they don't really have additional room to create a pool on this property. And the conditions and circumstances exist are results of actions beyond the control of the applicant. As stated, they, this is the way the home was built back in the eighties, so, yes.
Thank you, any questions for staff?
Just a point of clarification, because I was going through the plan. The pool itself is, looks to be like a twelve-by-twenty-four foot?
Uh, yes.
That's the total area?
Yeah, they haven't done any, they haven't made any plans to do any paving around the pool at this point, just a little bit of coping around the edge, but yes, it is a twelve-by-twenty-four-inch pool.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Will the applicants like to speak? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Candace Spears, I'm at eight-zero-zero-one Northwest, Hundred-and-Sixty-Sixth Street, Miami Lakes, Florida, three-three-zero-one-six. Feel very new to this, but, yeah, we just, we're like probably one of only three houses in our whole neighborhood that doesn't have a pool. It was kind of our plan when we bought it two years ago to install one, and we've actually been rebuilding the whole house, like, not rebuilding the whole house, but like, it's an eighties classic, so we've been doing little by little. The backyard is very big, and we did go ahead and measure with a laser level, if it would, how far it would come out of the ground, and it was less than twelve inches. So, there isn't like a large part there. And the edge of the pool is further back than the neighbor's pool deck on the other side.
Thank you, any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
I know the home and I know the backyard from visiting it.
Yeah, I'm surprised, and in that area, there's the survey tie line, I didn't realize it was so high.
It's interesting, but there are definitely a number of homes that are further than what...
I guess what happens too is that in this area, most, a lot of these homes were built prior to incorporation into the town, and I guess Miami-Dade County doesn't have this survey tie line issue, I guess.
No, the tie line exists for everybody.
But being able to encroach on it?
Right, you're not allowed to encroach on the tie line.
The tie line was the original setback line for construction at the time. So, you could build your home all the way to the tie line. That, obviously, didn't leave a lot of room for pools. Most of the times, if they had a pool, it was because it was an L-shaped home, so they would put the pool in the L, in the void of the L, for lack of a better... Whenever, however many of these houses had, because they didn't come with pools originally, right, they filled in with additions, that L-shaped portion, and then that leaves them with literally, but these are all things that happened through, you know, the last forty years, as these homes have been going through several ownerships. So, that sometimes leaves the home without room for a pool. In some cases, when there's a lot, very long distance from that tie line to the water's edge, it's almost okay to encroach a little. It's not okay in all instances, because if you're leaving like a really large, that's why we were comfortable, you know, recommending in favor of this one, because there is such a large span from the tie line to the water's edge. In other cases, it's a lot tighter, so if you have like only twenty feet to the water's edge, you've literally taken up half of that. And then, maybe the slope is very inclined, this one is a very gentle slope, which is why they're able to not protrude more than twelve inches even at the edge of the pool. So, that's why it's kinda, this is a sort of a unique situation in that.
So, in this case, we only, the only variance would be the encroachment, quote-unquote, onto...
Correct.
Because the elevation at the end is within...
It's not necessary, yes.
For discussion's sake, I'd make a motion to approve the variance as requested.
I'll second that motion.
Like I stated, I'm comfortable with the request, and I think they've actually narrowed the size. I mean, we see typically fifteen feet in width, and many times above that, seventeen, eighteen, and even sometimes even higher. But I think they've gone to twelve, and I think they're trying to do their part in complying. So, I'd like to hear everyone else's opinion, unless you're okay with...
Yeah, I think that, that's what I was thinking, that's what I was, when I noticed, it looked to me like twelve-by-twenty-four, but I went like, maybe I'm wrong. It does seem to be minimal.
Yeah, I looked at the pool, and if they moved it further back, they could get it more into the property, but I mean, if you look at the, at the drawing of it, showing the pool, if you move the pool towards the left side of the property, you're gonna see a north, east, or south there. I believe it's east, because of the way it's sitting on that lake. If you move the pool a little bit more to the east, then they could move it in, because they have substantial, they have like eight feet. It's hard to tell from this drawing here. Yeah, they have eight feet to the edge of the pool, so they could go closer to the residence and have less feet, but it's not that much, that big of a difference, I don't think it is.
I see what you're saying. Move it more to the west of the property, or whatever.
Towards the east, it would be towards the east, I was just looking at it on my phone. Yeah, we'd move it a little bit more towards the east, and they could come further into the property, into that eight-foot area, rather than into the jog out of the, of the house, but...
They would have to probably move it like eight feet that way, though, you know, to still be five feet away from the other...
Uh, three feet. It's three feet of the difference.
Yeah, but if they move it three feet, then they move it back, isn't it gonna also touch that protruding part of the property? So, they would have to move it further, I think, no?
Yeah, they have fifteen feet to the side yard, and it's three feet that goes past into that jogged-out-out area, so they would have to probably go six feet in order to be able to get through their income further in, but, I mean, it's... It's not really a big deal. Yes, Suzanne said there's a lot of room there. The only thing I noticed is a tree, are they gonna be removing that tree that's in the yard?
Wait, I'd like to open it up just for the applicant to come and...
I'll second the motion.
I'm in favor, I, I'll oppose, no. Yeah, can you please come up for one second?
Yeah, I noticed that there's a tree there, what type of tree is that, that would have to...
Just a, I don't know what it's called.
No, there's a big tree, there's, I saw several palms in the...
Oh, that is not there anymore, it was diseased when we moved in, and it started falling down in the next storm, so it's, has not been, it was a stump after the first hurricane that we had here.
Okay, it still shows it on the latest photographs from above.
Oh, really, I don't think they've been updated since, the photographs from like above?
Right, on the phone, if you look at the property...
Oh, on the phone, the Google ones, gotcha, so Google hasn't updated them.
You can look at it on any computer, and you can open it up, and you see the tree is there.
Okay, yeah, that hasn't been there in almost two years. But I can prove, we did get new pictures taken, but they're not on Google.
No, no, I just, I see the tree there.
Okay, yeah, no, that's not there anymore, yeah. Anything else?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Abalina, do you have any, any comment? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Board Member Leoncio.
Yes.
Board Member Julia.
Yes.
Board Member De La Sierra.
Yes.
Chairperson Fernandez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Congratulations. Moving on to, I think we're at a director's report?
Yes, based off our discussion, I'm gonna give the floor to you for a moment of personal privilege, and then after, I'll take it back for elections.
So, I'd like to first say that I have to resign effective nine PM this evening. I've turned in my resignation letter to the town. It's been an honor of serving with all the board members, you guys serve with integrity, with fairness. I know that you don't, there's nothing that comes before us that is done in haste, and there's a lot of pensiveness that goes into it, so I appreciate, I'm honored to serve with you, and if I don't have an opponent by noon tomorrow, I'll be on the council, so...
Congratulations, J.C., you've done a great job here.
Thank you. Thank you, so I think we have to...
So, at this time, as per nine PM, we won't have a chairperson. So, staff is proposing for you guys to have an election just for chairperson to fulfill the term up until April, because you guys have elections every April. So, this is gonna be from August to April, it's just chairperson. Never mind.
Yeah, because you're gonna be, just to put us in the right posture, you're the chairman today, you're not resigning after today's meeting, you're...
I'm resigning at nine PM this evening, according to my resignation letter, so I was hoping to get some direction from you. So, it's better that we do not vote now?
Well, your resignation doesn't occur until after.
Right.
Right, I mean, if you're resigning effective immediately, then we can, because there is vacancy, there's no vacancy to fulfill.
I see, that's a very good point.
But that's fine, we can do it next week.
Fred to be the next, at the next meeting, Fred can be here.
And we could have another board member by then.
Fred can actually run, Fred is the vice, and he can run the chair.
That's, that's exactly, okay, perfect.
So, we will be...
So, if nothing further, the meeting is adjourned.
I already did it.